Welcome to the New Michelin Township Board of Trustees. It's going April the twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming out. I am George Kiko, President of New Michelin Township Trustee, Vice President Jennifer Leon, Trustee Donna P. Rich Peterson is on assignment. He's doing some training right now. Superintendent Jamie May, joining Inspector Jeff Shipman, Pistol Officer Todd Bosley. Right into the fire, do you want to read those?
Sure. Um, motion for a resolution to approve changing the employment status of dispatcher Summer Terra from full-time to part-time effective four twenty-seven twenty-three and pay her the remaining vacation slash sick time balances.
Second. Have a motion of second voting, please.
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Then I guess the next one is just announcing the fire department. Paying for breakfast, open house on Sunday, May seventh, from eight AM to twelve AM PM at fire station number one located at four five six zero Broadway.
Okay, thank you. Uh, onto the road, Jamie.
Number three, a resolution to accept the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three road report.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion of second voting, please.
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
And then open, uh, uh, street sweeping. Just one? I believe so, just one bid. All right. That was from SCA Sweeping Corp.
Sky Sweeping.
Sky Sweeping here in town, uh, Louisville. Uh, proposal, uh, New Michelin Township to Jamie providing a four-wheeled vacuum truck prospect with operator to sweep all roadways as instructed per supplied map. We propose that we will street, uh, sweep the streets of New Michelin Township for your map and instructions for six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars with the township supplying the water to reduce dust in a dump site and disposal of materials collected. Um, this is the township of New Michelin shall hold SCA of Ohio harmless disposal in condition of all, hold them harmless of, uh, condition and all collateral, uh, collected the materials. That's it, six thousand, six twenty-five.
Do we want to award that or?
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept Sky Sweeping Corporation of America's bid to sweep New Michelin Township's streets this year for the map for six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Second. Motion of second voting, please.
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Okay, uh, and let's see. Number six, the sky's opening, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four road material bids.
Road material bids, we have four.
Yay, I get an easy one.
Yeah.
The hard one, George?
Yeah, I got a hard one.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start. I have North Star Asphalt drink, um, seventy-three forty-five Sunset Strip Northwest, Rockin, Ohio, four four seven two oh, two six four six. Uh, road material bids, um, three oh one asphalt concrete, sixty-three dollars a ton, four oh two asphalt concrete, seventy-two dollars a ton, four oh four asphalt concrete, seventy-eight dollars a ton. All prices are FOB are plant located at Sunset Strip.
Okay, I've got, uh, showing the materials, um, which is, uh, over here in Canton. Uh, showing materials rate at, uh, their Canton plant, three oh one is at sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents per ton. Uh, type two, um, is at sixty-six twenty-five per ton and type one is at seventy-five twenty-five per ton, seventy-five and twenty-five cents per ton. They also have some at their alliance yard, the rail yard, they have, uh, washed, uh, fifth, number fifty-seven to twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents per ton, three oh fours at their alliance yard at twenty-five and dollars and fifty cents per ton and also at their alliance yard, uh, number one, Play Center, twenty-eight dollars per ton. And then they also have, uh, number eights, uh, must be their Canton shop at, uh, number eight gravel is at thirteen forty a ton, uh, number fifty-seven gravel is at nineteen forty a ton and, uh, number nine gravel is at eight dollars and sixty cents a ton and, um, Mason Sand is twelve dollars and forty-five cents a ton and Cobble Creek Sand Source is nine dollars and fifteen cents per ton.
I've got EFCLLC. They are out of North Line, Ohio. They price our crushed limestone, number fifty-seven, uh, FOB and all this is per ton, seventeen seventy-five, number four, seventeen dollars, number eights, seventeen seventy-five, three oh four, fourteen twenty-five, number ones, seventeen dollars and type D limestone riprap, nineteen dollars a ton. Then, uh, they give a delivery price also for that, uh, crushed limestone fifty-seven at thirty-two oh nine a ton, number fours, thirty-one thirty-four a ton, number eight, thirty-two oh nine a ton, three oh fours, twenty-eight fifty-nine a ton, number ones, thirty-one thirty-four a ton and limestone D riprap at thirty-three thirty-four a ton.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it with these.
Okay, I've got one here from, uh, Giaga Highway Asphalt Painting and Chipping and Ceiling out of Hyrum, Ohio. Uh, they have, uh, out of their Shaler'sville plant, uh, MC three thousand is three fifty a ton. Oh, must be a gallon here, must be per gallon. MC seventy is three dollars and seventy-five cents a gallon, MC thirty, three seventy-five a gallon, CRS two is two eighty-eight per gallon, Fog Seal is two thirty-five a gallon, Dust Control, two fifty-two a gallon, uh, liquids delivered and applied to township roads, uh, zero to two thousand gallons is a dollar twenty-five a gallon. Must be the delivery fee, is that right, Jamie? I'm guessing. Uh, liquids delivered and applied to township roads, two thousand to four thousand gallons is ninety cents a gallon, four thousand and one gallon to six thousand gallons, sixty cents, and any over six thousand and one gallons or more, fifty cents per gallon. Um, aggregate supply including sweeping, rolling, calling, it must be ten, ten cents per gallon. Cold patch at the Shaler'sville plant is a dollar twenty-five. Shaler'sville's up there as, as far. Uh, limestone, fifty-seven limestone, uh, riprap limestone, um, they don't have prices on here, they just have the amount of what they would need, seven hundred tons, riprap, one hundred tons, limestone, a hundred tons, number eight gravel, fifteen hundred tons. They have a tonnage amount on here as well. All right, that's it. That one's inside there.
Yeah.
So Jamie, over review these.
Yeah. Next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Pistol Officer Todd.
Um, number eight, approve the minutes for the April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three trustees meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion of second voting, please.
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Number nine, approve payment to Huntington Bank for March twenty twenty-three service charges in the amount of one hundred sixty-three dollars and three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion of second voting.
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Done.
Yeah.
Approve the Ohio billing payment missed for February in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion of second voting, please.
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Yes.
Number eleven, approve payment to O'Tarmer in the amount of one hundred sixty-seven dollars for the addition of John Deere mower.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion of second voting, please.
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Yeah, that's pretty how many of that's here. I saw the emails you sent us with the resolutions that we were talking about diversifying.
Yes.
And you had it already to do that, I don't know if you had a chance to.
Yeah, I did, I, we actually looked at it, I brought it, you know, I brought this for you tonight, I didn't see it on the agenda, so I didn't have a.
Yeah, I just didn't.
Going to talk about it or not, this is our Star Ohio account.
Okay.
So you can, you can review that whenever and then this is our current bank account.
Okay.
So you can take a look at what you want to do now. Typically, you know, we would move to Star Ohio, but with the concern about if you have more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the institution, that's the issue.
Right.
Right.
So I don't know, we, we really need to like sort it out and, and think out what we want to do and I would prefer to do it, you know, with all of us together.
Right.
Doing it, so we know what we're doing.
Now with Star, can we, like, can we buy CDs through Star because it's, so it's just one account, that's it? So if anything over two fifty, we don't, we don't have coverage.
Right. Yeah, so I can leave those with you, this just has all of our information on it, I mean, you guys can see it, just.
And then it doesn't say, where's, does it have what we actually earn?
We're making almost five percent on Star.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like four point eight seven.
That's no bad.
It's on there, it's really a great rate, I mean, especially when you look at some of the other state rates, you know, that, that are, it's just a lot better, it's, it's really the best deal you can get.
But we can buy CDs within Huntington.
I would think, yeah.
We could do that and then maybe like JP Morgan, we have a larger asset pool.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I would think so, I mean, we have, we have over a million dollars in Star Ohio right now, I just don't feel comfortable having a lot more than that.
Right.
There at this point, so we do need to diversify.
Okay.
I think, I think then right now the best is like four point one per month.
Yeah, that's good.
There's nothing that over much more than that, I don't think.
Yeah, I've been looking around, I, because I knew this was coming, so I brought the information just so you had it and.
Okay.
I'm willing to help and.
Yeah, let's all put our head together and figure out where, where to get it, kind of bust it up a little bit.
Todd, I do have one thing I did want to ask you too, do we have, we got a couple letters coming this fall.
We do, yeah.
Okay, two or three?
Um, we may have one, I, we, I know we have one for sure, we may have two, I have it at the office.
Okay, you got, you got them, that's, okay, because that's due early August.
Yes, not, not very.
And we got two readings?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, should I?
You can keep those, yeah, I made copies for, for you, so you could have them.
Very cool, are you not looking at that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Concerns of the citizens, we have Jerry Joseph.
I have a concern about the property on sixty-one forty-seven and forty-one seventy-five Louisville Street. Uh, the township was holding thirty-six thousand dollars in trust until the repairs were made and according to Angela Kavanaugh, the building official, they never received any peer, uh, permits to do any of the renovations on this property, yet the money was released and why is that?
Well, I looked at the property and I think I looked at the property as well, the roofs were all completed.
We all three did.
Did you look at, and the, the doors were all done, the windows were all replaced, it was all painted gravel.
Why were no permits issued?
Where, whatever.
Um, did you speak with Angie Kavanaugh?
No.
Okay, because what my understanding is, I did speak to K and K and they said that they were cited for one permit and it was for the roof because the roof was so in, in disrepair that they classified it as a reconstruction or a rebuild and not a repair.
Okay, according to her, there was no, at this time, no permits were issued for any of the repairs.
Right, but do you have anything in writing from her?
I got a statement from the township website that says.
Right, but I don't have, but that was an email that was posted.
Did you have one from her?
I do not, that's why I'm asking.
Did you release the money?
Well, because we did our due diligence and it's, it was up to our discretion to release the money and we did assume that all the permits would have been pulled, but I was.
So nobody in the township can do work that they want to do without a permit?
No, actually.
Yeah, we don't have a building department.
Yeah, yeah, actually that email.
County, county.
Right, the email.
So they're overriding you then, right?
Right, yeah, we're not involved in that.
Yeah, we're not, not involved in the building.
We, we were.
We don't issue permits.
No, you released the money.
We were all, Jerry, through the insurance company.
Right.
They were to get at least in, um, you should think it was thirty-six thousand dollars. They were supposed to get that much done.
Right.
Before we would release.
Before we released the money.
Right, and, and K and K at that time had a lot beyond that done, so it was our responsibility through that and through the insurance companies to go look at that and say that's justified and give them that money.
Okay, but it wasn't worded that way though, that's my point.
Yeah, but what happened was they allegedly, Angie called the fire chief, the fire chief then drafted an email to us trustees saying that he was informed, but I didn't, we did not receive a letter, correct, Jeff? Or did we receive a letter?
You got an email. You got, you got an email from online, it's to Richard Peterson.
We did an email from A- Angie.
Yeah, Angela somehow thought she needed to go to Rich Peterson and tell him about it, I don't know why.
Okay.
She didn't call us.
Yeah, see, we've not been notified of that, so that was passed through the fire chief. So we have not seen anything in writing from Angie Kavanaugh.
It was me that.
Right, but we, but you're not, what I'm saying is, is the building department did not reach out to the trustees and say there is a violation, there are no permits, that is, that was passed through.
You, you released the money.
They did not reach out to us, they reached out to Rich.
But you released the money.
Right, after.
You know what I'm saying, that's not right.
Well, but the building department did not reach out to us.
The reason they reached, reached out to Rich is because it was a fire and he's the fire chief.
Right.
The money was, it was an insurance, it was insurance money, so the, the building department went to the fire chief and asked if he had released the money because he's the fire chief.
But he wouldn't release the money, he doesn't have the authority.
Right, I know.
And I believe Jeff asked him to inspect the building, didn't you?
You guys have, we're not going to have to release the money.
We do.
We held the money, yeah.
Right.
But that just doesn't make sense and that was a lie.
Yeah, we, I need to, we, we have to look into the actual violations because that, it's, it's kind of hearsay, if we don't receive the letter, you know, if somebody calls up and says something, that's really not an official way to respond, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't think it should have been released until he had every day being ordered. Anybody can do that, uh, I don't, why would I have to even get a permit to do anything?
I can answer that.
Thanks. Thank you. Lauren Sif- Sif- Sifkey.
Just real quick, can we get your address, Jerry?
That's on there, sixty-one thirty-two Columbus Road.
Thank you very much.
Um, Lauren Sifkey, sixty-nine five Homestead. Since April seventeenth, I've been trying to figure out what to say to the people without absolutely ripping you into pieces. Um, the fact that there are three of you elected to represent us and one of you spoke up in front of city councils, unacceptable. George showed up, stood in the back and watched, didn't say anything, Jennifer didn't even show up, can't be bothered with that, but can pick an argument about these meetings being filmed, it's a joke.
What did I pick an argument about being filmed?
About Todd.
What specifically?
Filming these, these meetings.
No, we want the tapes, that's what we're looking to get, so we can post them on our website, so don't put words in my mouth.
They're on YouTube, you can literally share them, you can click the share button and share them wherever, you don't need.
Well, but you have to, you have to watch an ad to be able to do that, we would like them on our website, that's what the dispute is about, videos, not about the recording. Well, I'm not hard on you, move on.
I'm not sure how you people got elected because you have absolutely no business representing the people in this township, um, your blatant disrespect is abhorrent. We don't expect, you know, for everything to go our way or to win every battle, but we do expect you to do your job and represent us, so far you all failed miserably at this task. Most people fail their, fail their jobs, get fired, so if we can't count any people to show up and speak up on behalf of the people who elected you, why should we ever reelect any of you? Okay, that answered my question.
We've got Donna Four.
I'm Donna Four from five eight five seven Rosedale. Jennifer, can you tell me why you didn't come to either meeting and speak to us?
Um, actually, I had another commitment and I actually purposely did not come because of the controversy that Todd stirred up, if you want to know the truth. He craft, he created, we create, no, let me speak, don't ask me questions, interrupt me. He created an opening by saying that the trustees weren't doing enough and that you should demand more in, from your trustees, so I wanted to give him the space to go to the meeting and see what he was going to do, since he has all the answers and we've done nothing, he was silent when K and K were there, he didn't say one word to Chris Kurzand, but you guys all did your stuff online.
Chris was the last one to speak.
It doesn't matter, he could have gotten up.
They didn't hire him, but he got one.
She has a microphone, please.
Yeah, so that, and if you would have seen the stuff that was written about us online, what, why would I step in there after what he did to me to slander, what Ben Chase said, all these guys said, I mean, it was, you want to talk about abhorrent behavior.
Right.
So I, I'm not going to step in there because what you failed to realize is we did not have a vote and you keep dragging us into something that we had no vote, I made all the phone calls, I spoke to every city council member but one, I met with the developer, I, I talked to everyone that I could, so I did do my job.
Now, what I'm saying is, I would have liked you to be here and just say the fact that you felt that what they were doing was not good for our township.
And we sent a letter, we sent a letter and we all did sign that.
But we didn't see it.
We had private conversations with them.
And we would have liked to heard it just from you, like when I get up here and I say something, I say it because I believe in it.
Right.
I say it from my heart, I say it because I care about the township, that's all we wanted.
I, I get what you're saying.
Let's just say we were disappointed.
That's fair.
Very disappointed and that's fair.
Absolutely.
We were very disappointed, we needed you to be there and say, wait a minute.
Well, based on the things that were said about us, I, I wouldn't think anybody would want me to be anywhere near them based on what was said, honestly, I believe that there were so many boundaries that were crossed with, uh, an elected official to say what he said, tried to charge, char, or tie George to the sale of the property, there was all kinds of stuff being stirred around and I'm not going to participate, I'm not being bullied into showing up because somebody doesn't think I'm doing my job, because I did do my job, and if you have a problem with that, then I'm sorry for that.
I, I have to say I was disappointed, well.
I'm sorry I let you down, Donna.
And, and, and to be very honest, it let me down as well as everybody in the room. The people were saying to me, where's Jennifer and George? I said, well, they've had a lot of money, I don't know where. George, can you tell me why you didn't come to the first one, you came to the second one, I didn't know you were in the room.
Yeah.
The second one, can you tell me why? And to be honest with you, I don't watch Facebook, I don't have it, I don't watch none of this because I'll tell you why. A lot of the people have very good reason to say what they're saying, a lot sometimes, you know, maybe they believe it, you have the right to your feelings and your thoughts and your opinions and I respect that, but I was disappointed that you weren't there.
For the first meeting?
For both of them.
I was there the second meeting.
You were here for the second one, but I did not agree with you, people said he was here, I says, why would I raise my hand and say, you know, George, the other fellow got five minutes, I only got three, I think he should have five too, and you could have at least said, I am not happy because it's going to cause a water problem, it's going to cause also a traffic problem, I can vouch that it is going to be a traffic problem and if they're putting a light, somebody came up with the idea of putting a light on, and I don't peach, that is almost a joke, you know how long a semi is? Take two of them from Peach to, to one, say even in one fifty-three, you'd probably have three of them and a few cars, right there, we stopped that, okay? If you take Francisca, you'll be lucky to get two cars through the light and maybe a semi. That is not an answer and if you buy their story of that, you're not as bright as I would think so. Do you agree that that was a good idea?
Well, we met, I met with the county, talked about the light, we talked about state route sixty-two, we talked about Broadway and he goes, I agree, there's supposed to be two hundred homes coming in here, we're going to do a study to see what the cars are now, but we cannot decide on changing traffic patterns and adding a turn lane until the cars are actually there, so they can't do it now in the state, in the hopes of these two hundred cars or these two hundred houses being built, they have to do it on today's standards, so when they added a turn lane on sixty-two, when they added the light there, when they made that turn lane with the, that was from the state and that was from the county, they're going to do a study on there and he said he would also study the traffic pattern at Peach and Broadway.
Okay, let's stop and think, by the time that they get these two hundred homes in, two cars a piece, then they'll come do the road study, it'll be a long, really long.
I know, welcome to government, that's how it works.
Uh, yeah, well, welcome to everything with government. And another question I have, a personal, I want to thank you for coming, Todd, I really appreciated you coming and you speaking because it affected you as a resident, not as a trustee, but as a resident and I want you to know, I do, I really did appreciate it, but unless you're disappointed, the two of you could have at least just stood up and said, you know, this is not going to work good for our township.
You got six, you have six minutes.
Yeah, I know, but I, you took a few of mine, so I'm going to just.
Yeah, that's a question.
Out of respect.
Yep.
Um, what I think should be done is they consider the fact that they are going to put two hundred homes up and it goes up pretty fast. The only other question I have is, I want to know, what do you do whenever say you want to go to zoning and you have, um, a question or you have a complaint, how does that work?
There's, uh, complaint forms online now, right?
There's, everything online.
Oh, there's a form?
Mm-hmm.
There's always been a form.
Okay.
But many of the complaints, we cover into our phone, we address them.
Okay, because here's what happens with that. You sign your name, you put your address in your complaint and then your neighbors, you put theirs in with them, all you have is two neighbors fighting, then an attorney makes his money and then you end up getting nothing resolved anyway, I'll sit and watch it for years and all it is is two neighbors arguing, nothing gets done. Uh, also, the thing I wanted to mention is, you were at the meeting, you said, George, the second one?
Yeah.
The gentleman that stood and spoke, okay? I'm sitting in the very first seat, I could not have understood how those five people can vote on something when he didn't really say what he was going to do there. I mean, he was all over the place.
He gave him a free pass on that, he got B five, he may sell that tomorrow, you don't know.
I think he'll be solid people.
Oh, yes.
I really do, that's how they work. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Donna.
And thank you for your time and I, I did say you disappointed me.
All right, down to zoning, Jeff.
Resolution twelve, accept the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three zoning report.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion of second voting, please.
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
And then we got thirteen, uh, accept the twenty twenty-three MS four report.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion of second voting, please.
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Done.
Yes, we got validated by the county tomorrow, so, and we're done with DPA, they do two a year and we were one of them, so we are set for like five years, they know everything about us.
Good.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I'm going to send this in tomorrow and we're, I think Todd already paid the bill early in January.
Yeah.
Got some.
Good, yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Can I have it signed up?
Yes. Um, number fourteen?
Sure, um, I motion for a resolution to accept a quote from alarm one L L C in the amount of nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for the purchase and installation of video equipment to be installed in the township bean hall at four four two two Maple Grove Street, fire station number two, Losco, Ohio.
Second, motion to second voting?
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Um, second line of resolution to purchase a one-year starter plan with Vimeo billed annually at twelve dollars per month.
Second.
Motion to second voting?
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Motion for a resolution to renew one-year subscription, subscription to Acrobat, Acrobath Pro effective May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three for two thirty-nine eighty-eight.
Second.
Motion to second voting, please.
George.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Next one.
That's me. I talked with the county engineers about the designation of intersections within our jurisdiction for stop or yield. We do have the power to do that without a traffic study from them. I do have the documentation I'll send you too. So if we see there's an issue, a safety issue, that's in a concern, that we can't put a four-way stop up. If we wanted a three-way stop, whatever would deem that we would want to do, without permission from the county. Um, there was a, uh, this is just recent, there was a case, Dave Yost, uh, sided with the townships. So we can't do that, maybe that'll help with Peach? I don't know, it's something that you guys drive down Peach, take a look and see what we, uh, because we have gotten a couple complaints about.
Right.
People speeding up on Peach. Um, then secondly, Jamie and I last week stopped and, uh, we talked to Ron a little bit, and he said, uh, he would gladly let us put a pole in his yard to put one of the L E D radars up. If we would like to do that, maybe that wouldn't be a bad idea to move one over and see if it does any good.
Will they concrete it in or not?
The pole, we have to leave the pole. And Jamie has one pole that's on Peach, that's in the weeds pretty much, you can pull that one off, leave the one up on the hill, up by where Todd's had. And maybe take the other one and move it over and put it at Ron's and see if it, see if it helps his situation.
Okay. You think the one heading westbound on the north side of the road should stay on Peach, is what you're saying?
The one up, the one up, the, the, come from California, closest to California, I think, it would say get down that hill is where they started to boot it.
Okay.
Is that true, Todd, is that kind of?
That is true, another, another area you want to look at is Pilot Knob, they're just north of Easton. That's where they really go flying.
To get up to Easton?
Easton, uh, headed, you know, headed up towards like Han.
Oh, yeah.
That way.
Yeah, uh, State Street.
So why?
Okay.
Well, those poles are about six hundred dollars a piece, they're twenty-foot long.
The galvanize?
In diameter, got to be concrete.
The galvanize?
What's that?
The, the galvanize with that much?
Just, yeah. And then the caps were like, they were expensive.
Could you take one of those and make it like a temporary rolling sign, like?
I think maybe, uh, check with the county and see if they get sheriff set down there or something, or even.
They have, they have a share, a share portable ones.
Yeah. Or even consider putting a ladder on for sheriffs or extending on time. Because signs don't mean nothing, you know, you've got four-way stops throughout that allotment down there on Humane Society and Speedway. So I checked all those, and they're all up, they're all up, they're all, I mean, you could add more, but.
I think.
I'd take it more about Peach than over there for the four-way stops, and maybe a grapevine. On Peach.
I believe there is a four-way. Oh, oh, okay, I know.
Not at Thule, but down the hill at the water pants.
Well, there's already four ways down at Humane Society, all.
Yeah, we're off of it, yeah.
So, I think Ron is not working it there, so, signs, if you're going to Peach, you're going to Peach, I see it everywhere.
And we talked to the sheriff's department about it.
Sure, they're, they're.
Their portables. They had one on Peach, they had one on there about a month ago, wasn't there one on there?
Yeah. Yeah, I have a question. You're saying that grapevine and Peach at the bottom of the hill as you go for Peach, right, Don? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so maybe, yeah, we had a couple complaints.
My neighbor that was catty-cornered me, uh, Kyle Erbrick, him and I came in like five years ago about that.